We'll go ahead and call a meeting in order at 7:05. Good evening, welcome to the West Covina City Council Chambers for the Tuesday, December 11th, meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission. First off, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Menifee, and please remain standing for a moment to sound fair.
Let's all stand, face the flag, and say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Before we have a roll call tonight, I'd like to welcome our newest member to our commission, Mr. Paul Blackburn. He's been about five years on, I believe, the community services, and welcome to the group here, and we'll have a lot of fun tonight. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Blackburn.
Mr. Holtz.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Menifee.
Here.
Chairman Stewart.
Here. Approval of minutes from the meeting of November 11th or 13th, excuse me. Any changes? All right, hearing none, it's as presented.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Four zero, that's right, Paul can't say that's right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. This is a time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the planning commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The commission may ask questions for clarification if desired at this time. By policy of the commission, oral communications at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Persons who are not afforded the opportunity to speak at this time may do so under Item E later on the agenda. I only have one card for oral communications, and that's Herb Reynolds.
Thank you very much.
You okay?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. First of all, I'd like to also welcome Commissioner Blackburn to the planning commission. Good luck, I know you'll do a great job. Secondly, this is the last meeting of this body before the end of the year, so I'd like to wish all of you and staff happy holiday season and a good 2013. I'm also up here to state the obvious. We are, as a city and as a nation, we are not out of the woods in terms of economy. Last night, my family and I went out to dinner at the Lazy Dog, which, you know, is always good. It's an excellent restaurant, good food, and fortunately, it seems to be doing very, very well, business-wise. Sadly, I noticed, two doors away, the Chronic Taco is gone, out of business, and it wasn't that long ago that we were there celebrating their grand opening. Also, the Chronic Taco at the Heights Center is also gone. Also across the street, the Arby's that opened relatively recently, was remodeled, took the place of the old Burger King, it too is gone. And then we hear in the news that Fresh &amp; Easy is having problems, that their, you know, Tesco over there in Great Britain is probably going to pull the plug on the American experiment, and sadly, we have, I mean, it's great to have them, but sadly, if they go, we'll have two more empty buildings in two key centers. So, you know, when these businesses come to town and come on our city, it's, you know, I realize everybody's got their economic issues, but it would be nice if we could, you know, support these businesses when they come into town. And also, perhaps I can get a response from staff. I noticed yesterday, at the Westfield Mall, that the boards advertising the arrival of the future opening of the Dylan's Irish Pub, those boards are now gone. So, I'm just wondering what the status is of that particular restaurant, is it coming or is it not, and are we, we in Westfield left to fill another rather large tenant hole? So, I'd appreciate an update on that. Thank you very much, and happy new year to everybody.
Thank you, Herb Reynolds. Anyone else wishing to speak on any item that's not on the agenda tonight, even though you don't have a card up?
I didn't see the card.
Ms. Fleck?
Actually, this is just a question. Now that the housing plan has been approved by the city council, where does it? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Irene Fleck, a longtime resident of West Covina, and I wish you all well for the new year too, and congratulations for joining the group, it's a fun group. The, my question is about the housing plan. It's now been officially approved by the city council. Where does it go now? Does it come back to planning, or does it head to the state of California? And is that a final sort of thing?
We'll get you an answer when they're finished with the oral communication. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this time? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the oral communication this time. And you want, like to answer a question?
Yeah, I think there's two questions, I think. I apologize, I'm not, on the Westfield-Dylan's issue, I'm not sure exactly what's going on there. I know they've had some setbacks. I'm not su, I haven't had confirmation that it's been, that it's been stopped, so I don't know the answer to that. In regards to the housing element process, the housing element was adopted by the city council, and the second reading was last meeting, so they have completed that process. The housing element has been forwarded to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for their review. They're required to certify it for it becomes official. We are very hopeful and expectant that they will certify it. They have 90 days to review it, so we hope to hear sometime, probably in February, or by February at the latest.
Very good, thank you, Jeff. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to consent calendar, and can we have a staff report now, please?
On the consent calendar tonight, we have the forthcoming. We will not have a second meeting this month, but we do have items for the January 8th meeting, so plan your vacations accordingly. We do have two extensions of time that are before you tonight. The first one's an extension of time for, from a sign company for the McDonald's on the east side of town, for a variance for a sign that they had approved about a year ago. Second one is for an extension of time for a conditional use permit in a variance for a church at 114 South Lindora. They are under construction, but it's a CUP, so it needs extension of time until they occupy the building. That one is under construction, we expect them to be completed within the not-too-distant future. We haven't, the other one, the first one on the McDonald's sign, we haven't, we're not sure what their timeline is.
Very good.
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. Any commission questions on the agenda, on the consent calendar? If not, motion to approve?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry to wait a second.
You've got, we got one. I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion. Okay.
It was five zero. Was there any, no, it's five zero. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearings, number five on your agenda. This is variance number 12-02, category exemption. Applicant is Herbierto Elvira. Location is 319 La Serena Drive. The request is for approval of a variance to allow an existing wall to deviate from certain development standards, including height. The existing wall is located along Mesa Drive and La Serena Drive. The property is located within the single-family residential zone, R1, zone area District 3. Can we have a staff report, please?
Associate Planner Ron Garcia will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. The applicant is proposing to legalize an existing wall in excess of the allowed height for a single-family property. The existing wall is located along Mesa Drive and La Serena Drive. The municipal code includes standards for walls and fences along property lines in the single-family zone. The fence and wall standard exhibit, as provided to you for your review, this exhibit indicates what the fence and wall standards require. In the front setback, you're allowed a three-and-a-half-foot solid, maximum six-foot decorative. Given that the lot is a corner lot, there is a corner cutback area which is required to be a 36-inch maximum to allow for vehicle visibility. After the front setback, you're allowed a six-foot tall solid wall, or it could be, and it could include wood, decorative wood, or it could be wrought iron. Upon being notified by community enhancement, the wall required an approval from the Public Works Department. It was determined that the wall was constructed in the city-owned right-of-way rather than on the subject property. Improvements in the parkway are not regulated by the zoning code and are reviewed by the Public Works Department. To construct improvements in the parkway, an encroachment permit must be obtained from the Public Works Department. Planning and engineering staff have worked with the applicant to modify the wall, including corner and driveway cutback areas, to ensure compliance with wall and fence standards. The applicant is currently modifying the wall to lower the portion of the wall located at the corner of La Serena Drive and Mesa Drive, which is specifically in this area here, which is a corner cutback area. The driveway to, I'm sorry, the applicant is therefore redesigning the wall to provide visibility for the existing driveway onto Mesa Drive for those making a left turn from La Serena Drive to Mesa Drive, and for those vehicles making a right turn from Mesa Drive to La Serena Drive. I'll just go over the site plan provided by the applicant. The wall, again, is located along La Serena Drive and Mesa Drive, which is here. The applicant is currently modifying the wall and working with staff, including engineering and planning, to modify the corner cutback area here at the corner, and also the cutback area here along Mesa Drive to allow for vehicle visibility. Currently, the wall located within the front yard does not comply with the front yard wall height requirements for solid walls. There's a photo here, the wall in La Serena Drive ranges from two feet to 5.5 feet. The wall includes pilasters that are approximately six feet in height, not including the retaining portion. As previously stated, the applicant is requesting to legalize the existing wall to provide security and safety for the subject property. This is the wall that's located along Mesa Drive, which a variance is not required for approval, and that wall height ranges from 2.25 feet to 4.92 feet. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to vary from the municipal code standards for the wall height by approximately two feet off of La Serena. This is an example of what type of decorative material is being proposed, a stone veneer on the pilaster. And this is the portion of the wall which is on La Serena Drive where the applicant is requesting that variance. Again, that ranges between two feet and 5.5 feet solid. Again, as stated previously, the code allows a maximum of three-and-a-half-foot solid wall in the front yard. As you can see here, it exceeds that height of a solid wall in the front yard. As stated, the wall was constructed in the public right-of-way without obtaining city approvals. The applicant has shown a willingness to work with staff to bring the wall into compliance with city standards. The applicant has started reconstruction of the wall, as stated, at the intersection, to allow for the visibility for vehicular safety reasons. The zoning code requires certain findings be made to approve a variance. Once these findings, one of these findings is that the property has exceptional or extraordinary circumstances that do not apply to other properties in the vicinity or that zone. In analyzing the situation of the subject property, staff noted that there are exceptional circumstances due to topography, and that the finished floor of the house is well above the street elevation. The wall will not deter from having an open and visible front yard, which is the intention of the wall and fence standards. Alternatively, the planning commission could determine that the height of the solid wall in the front yard must be modified to comply with the front yard fence height standards. If the commission were to come to that conclusion, the applicant would continue to work with Public Works to reduce the freestanding wall height to 42 inches or less, as well as the pilasters in the front yard area of the lot. Staff is recommending the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the variance. The applicant is present for any further questions. I also have Miguel Hernandez here from the engineering department, if you have any further questions for him. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good, thank you, Ron. Any questions of staff this time? I do have one, Ron. On the, on the front of the house, which is actually La Serena, if it were to come down to three-and-a-half feet, how many feet were involved about in distance, you know, to change it? Do you know how long the fence is tall?
On 5.5, we're talking a difference of maybe a foot to a foot and a half.
Yeah, but I mean, how many feet in length is the wall? That would have to come down to three and a half. Is it 50 feet or 40 feet?
Approximately, we're looking at maybe 15 or 20 feet. The engineer is here, he may be able to give you a better number, but we're usually talking maybe 15 to 20 feet.
Okay.
Lengthwise.
All right. And next question is, how far does it actually encroach on the easement?
It's, in the parkway, we're talking probably about a foot to two feet.
What, to two feet?
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Blackburn?
I have a question. Was there a, had an engineer, engineer the plans, was there a contractor involved?
That's probably a question to the, but we need to wait till we have a public hearing before he speaks.
Did you get your answer, Paul, or are you gonna wait?
I'll wait.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions of staff this time? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward then, please?
Good evening, councilman. I'm the representative for Mr. Vito.
And your name, please?
My name is Ralph Murillo, and I'm the representative. Do you like him to state his name as well?
Yes, please.
Yeah, my name is Eduardo Elvira.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, my English is not well.
We understand. Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. I could answer any questions you guys, or the staff has.
All right, okay, go ahead, Mr. Blackburn.
My question was, you did the engineering for the wall, was there a contractor involved in building the wall?
Right, yes, there was. That's how the whole issue started with. They built this wall without having an engineer involved at the beginning, and they constructed, and the contractor misguided the owner on having the wall, saying that the heights were fine, the wall was located within the property line, and that's how this whole thing, issue started with.
But there was no permit taken?
No permit taken at the beginning.
Any other questions? I do have one.
Yes.
On the curb where it goes from one street to the other, it's already been cut down. Is that the final height right there?
Yes, it is.
What are you gonna put, just put a cap on top of that or something like that?
We're gonna put a cap, and then we're gonna put wrought iron, just for, for, his concern is that his kids might jump through there, and that's the reason why we're putting that extra.
Well, I was thinking, yeah, so you're gonna put wrought iron in that opening there?
Right.
So what if you took the La Serena side down and continued to wrought iron down that side?
It'll be really feasible, yeah, because it's a solid block wall. It's totally filled in with concrete and reinforcing, and it'll be kind of difficult.
Right. And then back by the driveway, you have cut it down, that makes the code now?
Yes, we have cut it down there, and we've been working with the Public Works staff, and they've been really helpful with us, and the planning department's been great with us, helping us to get this, for Mr. Vito, this issue straightened out, and we would like to work with any, any conditions you guys, conditions they have for us, we'll be more happy to work with it.
Very, very good, thank you. I think that's all your questions right now.
Yeah.
Thank you. You can turn your card in, give it to Jeff there. Anybody else in the audience like to speak for this project? You're welcome to speak if you want, yeah. Just state your name.
I'm Menciaz.
All right.
Yes, I'm their neighbor, and I live like almost directly across, maybe one house up from them, but across the street, and before, there was nothing but like rat-infested ivy there, and to me, as a neighbor looking out, and it's just really, really improved our neighborhood. And, you know, in this economy right now, it's really, really bad, and I'm surprised that the wall they're building, it's beautiful. All of our neighbors, we're all really close, and we've all been talking and saying how beautiful this wall is. I don't know anything about codes, so I can't, you know, speak on that, but as a neighbor and seeing an improvement to my neighborhood, it's really well-welcome. You know, since they moved in, they started making improvements to the home, and it's beautiful.
Yes, sir.
To me, it'd be really sad to see it break down. We had an incident about maybe five months ago, and they have small children, and the cops came and they arrested somebody, that was a huge fight, which you never really see in our area, and the cops were jumping over the fences, and it was really crazy, and if I lived there, that would be a concern for me, because there's criminals and jumping over that wall, because there's areas that are low and there's areas that are higher, and I know they were trying to do it to code, but, you know, for me as a parent, and thinking of endangering my children if somebody coming into my yard, you know, I would rather have that wall there, and it was done really, really well. I mean, we've all seen it, and we've all talked about it, because in every neighborhood, people gossip, and it's a beautiful yard. I mean, it's a beautiful wall that was put up, and I walk out, and like I said, I'd rather see that beautiful wall there, that rat-infested ivy there that was there before, they were really taking care of their yard, and, you know, like I said, I can't speak on, you know, anything that goes into measurements and everything, because I'm very illiterate on that, but I love looking out and looking at that wall.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure.
Anyone else who would you speak for? Anyone that wants, is opposed to this wall, who wants to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public part of it and open up the commission discussion. Would like to, who else speak? Christopher Blackburn.
Staff report, would, you are accepting the proposal?
Yes, we are recommending the proposal with the conditions that Ron discussed.
I would have no issue with that.
Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, when I first looked at it, the wall is kind of obtrusive, is kind of large and all that, but it's very well-constructed, and the house is above the wall, so it's not like it's like a fort or anything, and they put a lot of work into it, and as long as they're willing to work with staff, I will agree to go along with the variance.
Thank you. Commissioner Woods, anything?
I was right there today, and I walked around it a couple of times, and I think the wall is very nice for that area. The corner, the wall does not affect any of the houses. There isn't a house by side of where it would be affected by, so I think that was, the wall is very nice there, and I would agree, I would accept it.
Good, thank you.
I think it's one of those situations, again, where we need to look at some of the statutes that we have. I'm very pleased that the neighbors like something. I think that's part of what we're all about, besides, besides what we do to meet certain kinds of necessary safety regulations, but it's always pleasing to know that the owner and the owner's representatives are well-liked in the neighborhood, and it brings a lot of credibility to what you've done. And your continuing issue that you stated here gives me great assurance that this will be a project that in the end will be a benefit to that neighborhood and to our community.
Thank you. Well, I pretty much agree with other commissioners. I think if it had come to me originally, the fact the house sits, does sit much higher, we probably would have found a reason to allow the fence higher in the front yard as opposed to normal. When I drove by the other day, my first concern was the corner where it has been cut down, because it was a blind spot when the wall was higher, obviously. Hopefully, the wrought iron will not make too much difference on the eyesight coming around the corner there. But as far as the wall, the wall is nice, and actually, I'm for allowing the city to work with you and to do the best we can about it, so. With that, we'll call the resolution, please.
I would move approval, but...
But we're gonna get a resolution number.
The resolution number is 12-5491.
Do we have motion, please?
I would, I would move that we accept the recommendation of our staff and that we move ahead with a variance 12-5491.
Motion, Mike, Commissioner Menifee, second. Second, Mike, Commissioner Woods. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Blackburn? Mr. Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Menifee?
Aye.
Chairman Stewart?
Aye. Here is five zero. This action is filed unless appealed to the city council within 10 days. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item six, which is general plan amendment number 12-01, zone change number 12-01, tentative parcel map number 71942, tentative tract map number 71960, mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. Applicant is Brandy Wine Homes. The location is 512 South Felinda Avenue on the Emmanuel First Lutheran Church lot. In the request, the applicant is proposing to develop a portion of Emmanuel First Lutheran Church. A tentative parcel map is proposed to subdivide the church property. The northerly 2.31 acres is proposed to be developed with a 19-unit residential development. The proposal requires the approval of a general plan amendment to amend the general plan land use designation from low-medium density to medium density, a zone change from single-family residential to specific plan number 25, waiverly specific plan, a tentative parcel map to subdivide the church property into three lots, and a tentative tract map to further subdivide one of the parcels into 24 lots. Can we have a staff report, please?
I will be presenting that staff report. The proposal is to construct a 19-unit small-lot, single-family subdivision on a portion of the property at 512 South Felinda Avenue, which is currently owned by Emmanuel First Lutheran Church. Project requires the approval of four entitlements, which is shown on the screen behind me, a general plan amendment, which is 12-01, which would change the land use designation in the general plan from low-medium residential to medium residential, zone change number 12-01, which would change the zoning on a portion of the subject property from single-family residential to specific plan number 25, which is also called a waiverly specific plan, and would adopt the specific plan. T tentative parcel map number 71942, which is a subdivision of a 5.1-acre parcel into three parcels, and tentative tract map 71960, which would further subdivide one of the parcels, which is parcel two, into 24 lots that will be developed with a total of 19 single-family residential units. So that's, that's the entitlements that are before you tonight. Project was reviewed as required for compliance with SEQA, mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, where an MND was prepared. Technical studies were prepared, including an air quality analysis and a traffic study. As part of the cultural resources section of the, this study, Native American tribes were notified of the project. Staff did receive a response from the Kiz Gabrielino group, and I may be butchering that name a little bit, requesting that a certified Native American monitor be present during grading activities. We have worked that out with the applicant. While there are no records of Native American sites at the subject property, the project is in a culturally sensitive area along the site of Walnut Creek, and a condition of approval has been included in the tract map resolution requiring that a Native American monitor be present during grading. Surrounding uses at the site. The surrounding uses, this is the church building, and it will remain the church property. There are single-family houses on Gabe Art to the east. Walnut Creek Wash is to the north with some residential over here and some commercial. This is East Valley Health Center. This is East Valley Health Center. East Valley Health Center leases a parking lot from Emanuel First Lutheran. That will not be touched as part of this. Then across the street from Valinda, you have a variety of things, but mostly you have this commercial center and residential and, well, this is commercial center too. So you have a combination of residential and commercial. This is the tentative parcel map. It would subdivide the current property owned by Emanuel First Lutheran Church. Parcel 1 is 2.3 acres, and that is the, the church building property. Parcel 2 is 2.31 acres, and that's this portion of the property, which is currently improved with vacant old school buildings and basically a big playground area, a lawn area. Parcel 3 is .41 acres, which is up here. It's the developed parking lot that we just discussed for East Valley Health Center. Parcels 1 and 3 would retain their current improvements with no changes and would retain their current general plan land use, land use designation and zoning. So nothing would change on those two, those two segments of the property. Proposed subdivision would be located on parcel 2, this parcel, which is the vacant school buildings and the playground. Discussions we have from here on are all related to parcel 2. Again, no changes to these parcels in terms of land use or general plan or zoning, only to parcel 2. So now we're going to discuss the development proposal. The proposed 19-unit residential project requires the approval of a general plan amendment. The current general plan designation on the site is low medium residential, which allows densities up to eight units per acre. The proposed development is 8.2 units per acre. The applicant therefore is requesting to change the land use designation to medium residential, which allows densities up to 15 units per acre. The proposed designation will provide a transition from the single-family residential development to the east and south, and the commercial development to the west and north. So we're kind of in a, in a, in a transition area. If you go over here, you got single-family residential, you have the church building. South of the church building down here on, on the south side of service is more single-family residential. That's a residential neighborhood. If you go to the north here, you get into the Guindora Avenue area, which is all commercial. And then across the street to the west is also commercial. So it's kind of a, a transition area that would allow for a transition or buffer type use between the residential and the commercial. The proposed, the proposed project also requires the approval of a zone change to change the zoning on the 2.31-acre site from R1, Area District 2, to specific plan 25. The current zoning requires a minimum lot size of 9,460 square feet, and that's at a density of 4.6 units per acre. So that's what the current zoning, the R1 zoning, would allow to be developed there. As I discussed before, the project is proposed at 8.2 dwelling units per acre with a minimum lot size of 3,112 square feet. The zone change would, would also adopt a proposed specific plan, which is included in attachment 3. Attachment 3 is your resolution for the zone change. That resolution is a very large document, includes 80 pages or something of the specific plan. The specific plan tailors the zoning standards to the development and to the site. The applicant, the applicant is proposing to construct 19 residential units accessed via private street designed in a loop, which you can see behind me. It's pretty self-explanatory. Lot sizes range from 3,112 square feet to 5,035 square feet. There are five common lots proposed. So it's a 24-lot subdivision, 19 residential units, five lots. And I don't know that I can tell you what, what all the lots are, but they include things like the open space area and the streets and these sort of driveway access areas. The private street would be accessed off Valinda Avenue, just south of the parking lot for East Valley Health Center. Vehicular security gates are proposed for the development. The entryway has been designed in accordance with the city's vehicular gate standards, including the ability to turn around if the gate doesn't open. You can see here that there's, there's like a median here. You can, it's 25 feet here to allow fire access. If a car were to come in here and not be able to access the development, they could turn around here by using this turnaround space and get out that way. It also allows for stacking approximately three vehicles if the gates don't open before it starts interfering with traffic on the street. Decorative paving is proposed at the entryway. Six-foot block walls are proposed around the development. A decorative block wall is proposed along the Valinda frontage that includes a three-foot landscape area as a buffer. The area I'm talking about is here. So there's a wall that's here, this is the rear yard of these two units. And there's, they've, they've designed it so there's a three-foot landscape area that would allow for a buffer of that wall. The existing six-foot wrought iron fence that divides the existing parking lot from the, from this property would remain. So that's in this area here. There's, there's a fence that goes here, and that, that wrought iron fence would remain. When specific plans are proposed for small lot, single-family development, staff provides information to the applicant on standards that have been approved per specific plans historically. And that's the chart you see before you, which is, I think, attachment 6 in your staff report tonight, which has sort of kept track of the, the standards that have been adopted for six different specific plans that have been approved over the past 10 years or so. The precedent for setbacks has been 10-foot for front yards, 5-foot for side yards, 15-foot for rear yards, and 20, and 20-foot driveway lengths. You see that there are some exceptions to those, that that's not, that's not a code. It's not a hard and fast rule, it's more of a rule of thumb, that tries to help us give some kind of a level of consistency and at least a benchmark from where to start discussions. In this case, the applicant is, is consistent with those standards with the exception of rear yards and side yards. The proposed rear yard on most of the lots is 15. I think we counted six lots that is either 13 or 14-foot, but, so they're, they're fairly consistent on that one. The applicant is proposing a three-foot, three-inch side yard setback, allowing a minimum separation of six foot, six inches between structures. This area would be used by one of the adjacent houses, with the other house granting a use benefit easement on its portion. This concept allows for homes to be constructed so that the eaves extend over the perceived property lines. The actual location of the walls will give the impression that there's a zero lot line between properties, but actually, the property line will be in the center of, of the two units. There are properties in Woodside Village area of West Covina that were developed with zero lot lines. And we did have Sunset Walk, which is on Sunset and Franciscato, I'm sorry, Sunset and Fairgrove, which was developed with a Z lot benefit easement circumstance. And I'll just walk through that just briefly here, just so maybe reinforce what I just went over. This change in, in tone here is, is the property line. However, their proposal is to build a wall here so that now this property here would have access to this side yard. And, and they would be able to use it, I believe, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this wall would probably have no openings on it, no windows, so that there's no, there's no visibility and privacy is maintained. So from all appearances, when you, when you're walking or driving down the street in this neighborhood, this would appear like a, this property's side yard, this would appear like this property's side yard. The problem with, with putting the side, with putting the property line on, on, on the wall... Making it zero lot lines. Today's building code requires you to have a good fire separation, which, which would change the way that the houses were designed. So that, that's why they're doing it this way. The applicant is proposing two unit types and two types of architecture. All units would be two stories. Plan 1 would be 2,148-square-foot house, including the 400-square-foot garage, with three bedrooms and three bathrooms. Plan 2 would be 2,429-square-foot house, including a 400-square-foot garage, with four bedrooms and a loft and three bathrooms. And they, we, as you can see with the boards, they've got a lot of different elevations, there's a lot of different perspectives and variety of ways they're doing things. So I'm not going to go through all the elevations, we're going to go through them kind of quickly here. Basically, they proposed two designs, a Spanish design and a French design. Here you see the Spanish architecture. And these are the side elevations. That's plan 1, which is a smaller unit. Then they have plan 2, which is a larger unit. This is Spanish architecture. And these are the side elevations for that. Their proposal, roof materials are S tiles for the Spanish. And we get to the French, they're flat tiles. All windows are including foam stucco trim. And the front elevations all incorporate stone veneer and window shutters, and they all include some type of front porch. So those kind of give you an idea of the architecture. The specific plan will allow for the construction of balconies on the rear elevation. The proposal before you doesn't have balconies, but the specific plan allows development standards to allow a homeowner to come in and build a balcony. However, on lots 5 through 8, they have specifically designed it, the specific plan to not allow balconies. So that's 5, 6, 7, and 8. These are the houses on Gay Bar, which are single-story houses. That was in respect to trying to provide them some privacy. Most of the rear elevations have larger windows, but on lots 6 and 7, which are these two lots, they're proposing, they're proposing clerestory windows on the rear elevation of those, with the larger egress windows on the side elevations. There are a variety of side elevations proposed depending on whether the side yard is adjacent to a use benefit easement at the end of a row of houses, or is one of the lots along the easterly property line. In terms of parking, the proposal includes a two-car garage with a minimum 20-foot-long driveway for each unit. So each unit would have, would allow four cars to be parked on the property. In addition, the applicant is proposing 14 parking spaces that are on the interior side of the Loop Road. So you can sort of see them here, you can see them better in the colored, which we'll get back to the colored slide in a minute, but you can see them sort of here. That's where the 14 parking spaces are. Those would be basically, serve as guest parking spaces. The applicant has provided a preliminary landscape plan, which is actually what you're looking at there, indicating that the front yards of the houses will be landscaped as well as the common open spaces. The plans indicate that the open space area will include picnic tables and barbecues as well as a lawn area. Hedges are proposed along the Valinda frontage, along the wrought iron fence adjacent to the parking lot, which is this area here. Along the interior loop, we're adjacent to walls and fences. So they're proposing hedges, well, I'm sorry, hedges in here, the side yards, and hedges through here. Sort of a screening mechanism to, to screen the fences that are behind there. They're also proposing something that they call the terminus backdrop edge screening, which is comprised of a row of trees. And they're proposing that in two places, I believe. One along the eastern property line, you can see it here. And then also at the entryway of the project right here, so that when you come in, you're basically going to be seeing this row, wind row of trees there. These trees will act like a large hedge to provide a green wall as a buffer. And block walls are proposed, as I discussed earlier, around the perimeter of the development, with six-foot-high wooden fences proposed between the units on the interior. So block wall around the outside, the interior lots would be separated by wood fence. The proposed project would be built in four phases. Phase 1, you see three colors here. Phase 1 is off-site improvement, so it doesn't, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be any units constructed as part of that. Phase 2 would be the infrastructure and the two model homes, which is the yellow that you see. Phase 3 would be the units on the easterly side, which is sort of the pink color you see. And phase 4 would, would be the southern units, which is the greenish color you see. The applicant has estimated that the construction time would be about one year and nine months. I believe that's based on the time when they pull a, their first permit. Staff has worked with the applicant to design the plan to be compatible with the surrounding uses. In evaluating the proposal, staff determined that there are three issues to, to just sort of emphasize. Because the proposed project is a small lot subdivision with common areas in a unique setting, it is important that the CCNRs address all potential problems. The CCNRs are always going to be there when you have a condominium-type development here that has common open space. These include that no habitable space additions are permitted, that parking or storage of recreational vehicles such as RVs, boats, trailers, fifth wheels, ATV, et cetera, is prohibited, that clarification of the rights and privilege granted by the use, use benefit easement in the side yard between units is, is provided, and that easement rights be granted to the HOA for access and maintenance of the edge screening. That's so that, that's so that the, the, the row of trees here is under the maintenance of the HOA and not under individual property owners who might choose just to chop them down because they don't like the way they look or something. So, and lastly, that lots 5 through 8 are not allowed to have a second-story balcony. So that, we'd want that in the CCNRs. It's already, it's already in the, the specific plans before you. The second issue is the maintenance, maintenance of the privacy of the houses along Gay Bar Avenue. The houses on Gay Bar are single-story while the proposed units are two-story. Staff discussed with the applicant the importance of designing to reduce the privacy impact. The applicant has responded in, in a number of ways. They designed lots 6 and 7 with clerestory windows. This is what you see before you here. These are the elevations, the clerestory windows. So if you take a look at, you know, the, the boards here, you'll see that you have windows on the rear elevation of, of a good size on, on these boards. But these units on lots 6 and 7 have, have been designed like this, so that they, the visibility is greatly reduced into, out those windows and into the lots behind. In addition, the applicant has proposed a tree row along the eastern property line, which we've discussed a couple of times, and also the requirement that no balconies be allowed along, on these four units that, that would be closest to those houses. The final issue to consider is a three-foot, three-inch side setback with the use benefit easement. While the other small lot developments have incorporated a five-foot setback, the city does have zero lot line projects in Woodside Village, and Sunset Walk was developed with the Z lot configuration. The resolutions that are before you tonight have been created with the project utilizing the three-foot, three-inch setback. The planning department is recommending approval. The general plan amendment zone change and mitigated negative declaration for CEQA require review by city council, so those will be recommendations from this commission, while the planning commission has the authority to, to approve the parcel map and the tract map. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you, Jeff. Any questions of staff this time? Commissioner Menifee?
Yes, I have a question about the roadway as, appears to be a two-directional roadway, and I wanted clarification of that. And the second one is, I think I understand that, that it's a property that extends to the north. It would be a playground area or a recreational area, is that correct?
This area?
Yes.
That, yes, that would be an open space area. It is basically, they have it designed with picnic tables and barbecue, and then just an open green space for, you know, frisbee, kicking a ball around, throwing, playing catch. So yes, that, that would be for the, it's not a public, that's only, that's a private open space for the community here.
And the roadway?
The roadway is, is, yes, it's two-way.
It's two-lane. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, who's going to own the property? The church, or is, are they selling it?
This property here?
Right.
This property would be sold by the church to Brandywine. Am I saying that correctly? To Brandywine, who's the company that's going to be developing this.
Okay.
And then these, these, they would intend to sell these units to potential buyers.
Okay. And on homes 17, 18, and 19, which are kind of facing the street, what, what goes, I see like trees there, but what's going to block that? What is the surrounding area around 17, 18, and 19?
You mean here in the interior, the loop?
Yeah.
Well, this would be developed basically front yard. So these two, this would be their front yard with landscaping. This would be their front yard. There would be fences here, and here, and here. And what they're proposing is sort of a hedge here, which I, 68 feet in height, something like that, between the fence and the, and the curb.
Okay.
And that area and in this area. In this area, they're using this terminus backdrop idea, which is basically trees that, if I understood correctly, grow to 30, 35 feet in height. Kind of a columnar tree.
Okay. Will there be a wall between 18 and 19 in the backyard of?
Yes. Six-foot walls would separate.
Okay.
Yeah. There would be a wall here, there would not be a wall here, but there, there would be a wall here that provides this, this yard. There'd be a wall here for this yard, and then this yard would be surrounded by a wall.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? I just have one, Jeff. Any response to mailouts at all?
We did not receive any response, no.
And that was how many, how many mailouts was it, really?
We sent out 51 notices.
51 notices? Okay, thank you. All right, with the applicant, like, or representative, like, speak for it? May I just state your name, please?
I'm Kai Evans with Brandywine Homes.
Very good, sir. You want to tell us about your project?
[laughing].
We probably covered... We probably covered it pretty well so far.
I'd like to say, thanks to the council members for taking time to meet with us. Jeff presented it beautifully. We thoroughly enjoyed working with the staff, public works and engineering teams, and we look forward to doing business with you. This is our first project in West Covina, and so far it's gone very nicely.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Specific questions.
Commissioner Woods?
Is there any excess property for people to park in, coming in to visit the owners? Additional parking for people that are visiting or people there?
Yeah, we're proposing fourteen guest parking spots that will, will basically wrap around the internal island portion of that site plan as you see it. They'll be designated parking stalls.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Woods? Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Blackburn?
Looking at your project, it looks like a great project, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask, but have, do you have any idea what the homes would sell for at this time?
At this time, we're looking somewhere between the high fours and the low fives.
Very nice project.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have any completed properties in this area that we might take a look at?
In West Covina, no. We, we're from Orange County, where our office is located in Irvine, for the most part. Most of our, most of our projects have been in Orange County. We are starting to get out into the LA area. The closest one, which is not yet constructed, but we are, we just finished the entitlement process, and we're now in the, the, the construction document phase, is in La Marada. That would be the closest.
But it's not completed?
It's not completed. We haven't started yet.
Where's the closest one that would be completed that we could look at? That would be somewhat similar.
Buena Park. We just finished eighteen single-family houses in Buena Park off of Lincoln and Holder.
Could you get the staff, the address of those, so we can take a look?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We could actually, we'd be willing to send some literature via email, if that would be helpful as well. Sure.
I have a couple of questions for you. You're not, you're not going to be involved in the, you know, you're allowing balconies except for five through eight inclusive, but you're not going to be involved in actually building the balconies, right?
No.
So there, that's just a strictly homeowner project?
Correct.
And then the, you start off with everybody's got four parking places, but somehow they seem to fill the garage or something else. So what about the fourteen outside? You got a lot of people to park out there on the street, or is there a plan for that overnight?
See, we've got, we've got essentially four parking spots per home. You've got the two garages, the two driveway. Is there going to be any language?
But down the line, where you know how people fill the garage up and they're going to park in the street?
I understand your question.
They're probably just being a homeowner association, the HOA, right?
I'm Brett Whitehead with Brandywine Homes.
Thank you.
We've done a whole bunch of projects like this, and we do not allow the homeowners to actually park in the guest parking spaces. That is actually managed and run by the HOA management company, so they come around and routinely patrol, look at it, field any concerns or questions from the homeowners. So if there is a group or a homeowner that's using those spots, they will call them and enforce the CCNRs.
Very good. That's a good, that's a good answer. And then also on the, on the phasing, phase two is your two models, when would phase three start to build?
We're looking at, I think the timeline is we've got to get the parcel map done, recorded, so we have a legal parcel to actually close on.
Right.
We're hoping to do that in February. We would do the demolition. It'd take about four months to do the demolition, grading, streets, sewer, water, all the improvements. Then we would start the models. So we're hoping to open for sales this coming summer of 2013. That's our goal. And then it would take us about 12 months to build the rest of the project.
So hopefully, one, one year, nine months is your estimate, by the right time.
I'd say from start to finish, about 18 months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, a question. Once you sell, are the homes going to be built before they're sold? Or are you going to sell a house and pick a lot? How's it going to work?
Typically, we would like to sell them before we build, but we'll be building in those phases that you saw, so we'll be under construction on, let's say, eight homes at a time.
The reason I ask, if a home isn't sold and you don't start construction, you've got empty, empty spots.
Yeah, no, we typically do start them before we have them 100% sold.
Are you, or are you typically, you are?
Yeah.
So they'll be built?
We like to try to sell them once we've poured the foundations and started the framing so that our homeowners can do their upgrades.
Okay.
On their houses, which is, you know, electrical upgrades or anything else, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak for this project in favor of it? I have, I have no cards for or against. Anyone about to speak against it? It's very quiet. Okay. We'll close the public testimony and go to the commission discussion here. Who would like to start off here? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, it, my first reaction is very dense building in there, but, and I was somewhat against the project that was on Orange and Bedillo, but it's worked out very well, and it's very, very similar to this project where there's very close density. I'm glad we're making use of the property. I was really surprised that you could get 19 homes in that space, but I think they're going to be very nice, and I'm in favor of the project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blackburn, any comments?
Just as I said earlier, it's, in looking at the project, it looks like it's a great project for the area. Hopefully, the prices will be good, and we'll have 19 new families move into the area. Other than that, I have no comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Minifee, Commissioner Woods, anybody?
Very thorough, very thorough explanation, very thorough documentation, and an expression from our staff at how good that working relation has been that we hope will continue with our city. So we thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Woods, comment?
I approve the project.
All right. Thank you. Well, when I see a project like this, we've had them before, I always go for the pluses and the minuses, and this project came out real well on the, on the plus side. You've got things there that, the entrance is, is fine with the turnaround and everything, and the parking places, I don't think the zero property line is going to be a problem at all. And with the tankless water heaters and the trash pads and everything, I think you just about thought about everything, so I don't see any problem at all, and it's, like I say, we have no, no cards back on objection for any of the neighbors, and you're taking good care of the neighbors in the back there, so I'm definitely for the project. So with that, we'll go ahead and call for the resolutions.
Just to be clear again, we're going to have five resolutions. The first three are recommendations to the city council. So 12-5492 is a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. 12-5493 is a general plan amendment. 12-5494 is a zone change, so those would all be recommendations to the city council. The tentative parcel map would be 12-5495, and the tentative track map would be 12-5496. Both of those would be the decision of the planning commission.
Right. You have a motion, please?
Well, I would move, I would move approval of, if we can include all of those numbers that were just cited.
We can do a one motion.
Yes, please.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, can, the guy's coughing. Second, Commissioner Holtz. We have a rule call, please?
It's on the other side this time. Commissioner Minifee?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Aye.
Chairman Stewart?
Aye. This final action on this matter will be taken by the city council as a public hearing tentatively scheduled for January 15th, 2013. Thank you very much. Best of luck in West Covina. We enjoy you having you here as a builder. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item seven, please, which is conditional use permit number 12-10. Catego exemption. The applicant is Tim Chen from Rosemead Beauty School. Location is 955 South Glendora Avenue. The request is for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a 2,200-square-foot beauty school within an existing commercial center, Hong Kong Plaza. The project is located in a neighborhood commercial NC zone. Somebody have staff report, please?
Associate Planner Ron Garcia will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Chairman Commissioners, the applicant is requesting the approval of conditional use permit to allow a beauty school called Rosemead Beauty School East Side Extension within an existing tenant space. The beauty school will be the second school to be operated by the applicant. The beauty school provides instruction in cosmetology. Students will be trained to do hair, makeup, nails, skincare, and massage. Upon completion of a 1,600-hour program, students are eligible to take exams to the state to become licensed cosmetologists. The beauty school is also accredited by the National Accredited Commission for Cosmetology and Arts and Sciences, which reports to the Department of Education to allow financial aid to qualifying students. The applicant anticipates two staff members and 14 adult students per session. They also anticipate eight to 14 students per session. The total number of adult students would not exceed 14, and the total number of employees will not exceed two. The applicant has indicated that the beauty school could potentially be open six days per week. Instructional hours initially proposed are from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Tuesday, and 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Wednesday through Friday, and 8:30 to 5:00 PM on Saturday. Multiple sessions will run throughout the day. There shall be a minimum of a 15-minute break period in between sessions to allow students from the prior session to leave and open up parking, parking for students in the next session. The shopping center includes 472 parking spaces on the site. The shopping center currently has a deficit of 69 spaces. In 2002, the planning commission approved a 15% reduction in aggregate parking requirements for retail businesses and a variance from parking to allow an 8,000-plus-square-foot building at the southeast corner of the shopping center to be used as a restaurant. Based on that approval, 541 parking spaces are required in the shopping center. The subject tenant space was previously occupied by a pet store that required eight parking spaces, based on the size of the tenant space and the retail use. The code requires one space per two employees, one space per two students for college, business, and trade schools. The applicant has proposed a maximum of two staff and 14 adult students per session. Therefore, the beauty school will require eight parking spaces. The center would still continue to have a deficit of 69 parking spaces. Based on the number of students and employees proposed for the school, it is anticipated that the parking amount will not exceed the amount of parking available. In order to address potential parking problems, staff has included a number of conditions in the resolution. These include limiting the square footage to 2,200 square feet and limiting the number of students per session. In the event that a parking problem develops, staff has included a condition to allow the commission to review the issue, requiring a six-month review. Staff has reviewed the applicant's proposal for the school at the subject site and is recommending approval of the project. The onsite parking appears to be adequate to accommodate the parking amount that the business will generate. The proposed school will provide a training opportunity for residents in the region and will be a unique and beneficial addition to the shopping center, provide a complimentary service to the surrounding area. Lastly, staff received a letter with the petition on December 3rd from addresses within Hong Kong Plaza. The letter is attached, as attachment three, for your review. The letter requests that the planning commission deny the application. There is a, the following is a summary of the reasons for requesting that denial, which have all been indicated in your staff report. Staff has prepared a resolution of approval with conditions as discussed above. If the planning commission determines that the use is appropriate, the commission can adopt the resolution and approve the request. If the planning commission has concerns, the item could be continued to allow staff to complete a two-week parking survey of the shopping center to determine the parking conditions within that center. Due to the holidays, it would be appropriate to complete such a survey at the beginning of January and continue the public hearing to January 22nd of next year. The applicant is present for any questions. Lastly, staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit 12-10. I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions, staff, at this time?
I have one.
Commissioner Minifee?
Can you tell us how many of the spaces around that shopping center might be vacant at the current time?
I do not have that information. The applicant might.
Okay. I'll withhold that question.
I don't know what that percentage of empty tenant spaces.
Any other questions, staff? I do have one, Ron. Did you say that the pet store had a code required, eight, eight spots for that?
Yes, well, again, it was previously a pet store, based on retail.
Yeah.
The code requires one space for every 250 square feet, which comes out to eight spaces.
So you're, you're saying by code, this, this project only requires eight spaces as well?
Right, and that's based on the fact that they're limited to the number of students and employees, and it cannot exceed that eight spaces.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, staff, this time? All right, seeing none, is Mr. Chen here? Tim Chen?
Peter Wang, representative of applicant, JWL, the architect and the engineer of record for the project.
Okay. Go ahead, tell us a little bit about it, begin.
Okay, this, Rosemead, you know, the beauty school has established, you know, back to 1948, has, you know, a well-known beauty school, and then provide cosmetology, you know, instruction in the San Gabriel Valley. The reason is, you know, that they have been very, you know, heavily marketed by the Hong Kong market to get them to the West Covina and to provide the opportunity and the career training for the local residents. The also the reason they call for the east side extension because, and it can, a lot of people who need, you know, the new career transformation, they can be trained and without even transported to Rosemead, and it can save, you know, they can use the public transportation or even, you know, in the walking distance, you know, to the local community center to learn the skill. And also by this time, Rosemead also, Rosemead Beauty School also can provide, you know, the financial aid, federal grant, and also assist the older student to take, you know, pass the state, you know, license, you know, license test for them to go on their next, you know, the career. So therefore, the representative, representative from the Hong Kong market, you know, is here, and they can tell you how heavily they've been trying to get, you know, this tenant over to West Covina. And I believe the parking space currently, due to the economic, you know, the situation, that center actually is pretty empty. And I think at this time, we don't really foresee we're going to have any parking issue right here. I'm ready to answer any question.
Any questions, Mr. Wang? I do have one for you. I think the letter we got, is this beauty, Rosemead Beauty School going to take in customers?
I think any beauty school, it will, you know, the, will, you know, the offer, you know, the certain custom to walk in and for the student to practice. I think that's one of the, you know, the, one of the tradition that any beauty school will do. And, but, the, currently, the, 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 the opposition, you know, actually is from the, established, existing establishment inside the center, but the Rosemead Beauty School don't, they don't just doing the hair salon. I think they offer all other kinds. So even though they're going to offer the local, local, you know, rent to walk in, I don't know if you should said, you know, the experiment or guinea pig for the student, but they do, you know, the, they do offer, you know, the two, in certain period of time, and, but I think, you know, they only have a few seat just for hair. Again, also on our proposal, they do provide a very, very low price for the kids. So in other words, for the very needy family, you know, I think this school might provide certain. certain degree of relief. I, I don't know, I mean, but that's why I feel, I'm, I've been 25 years, you know, the West Covina residents, although I think, you know, the, the Rosemeat, you know, the beauty school will provide a great, you know, the career training for the local residents.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Wang? All right, thank you, Mr. Wang.
Thank you.
With the, David, I can't see your last name on here, so, what is it?
Lee.
Oh, there's something else in there too, so, oh, I see, okay, I see.
Pronounced Lee. David Lee.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Thank you for having us today. I just want to address a couple of the questions we had earlier. We're about 22% vacant right now in Hong Kong Plaza. We have the property for about 10 years now. It was a redevelopment site when we first came and purchased the property, completely abandoned by the previous supermarket that was there. We put some money in there and redeveloped it and really kind of carried through the bad times. We found Rosemeat Beauty School. They've been around in business for about 60 years. So for them to open up an extension, the state has certain criteria and rules and, and good standing before they will allow them to open up an extension or a second school. So we've been looking for them. We've been in negotiation with them about two years, trying to get them to come to West Covina. We believe that they will add, not only to our center, but also to the community. Adding to our center, they'll add some diversity. With students there having lunch and dinner, they'll enjoy some of the retail complex stores that we have and the restaurants that we have in the plaza. And regarding the opposition, the letter that we got, I have also approached the tenants that were worried about that. I think their initial, you know, in today's economy, or even in good economy, when you have somebody coming in that would offer a product for, at a lower price, they're scared. But I went and explained to them, the people that are cutting, they're offering haircuts or whatnot for their students to practice, so they're really recovering just their costs, only their costs. So it's a $3 haircut, or to color your hair, it might be $7. This is the cost of the material. And I explained to the tenants that are there that they're not professionals that are cutting. These students are paying money to go to the school, and they have to practice. And, you know, when they're cutting the hair, they're probably shaking, or like Mr. Wang said, that, you know, that they're going to be, the people that are going there are essentially guinea pigs to the students, and they understand that. Versus getting a professional haircut for a couple of dollars more, you know, you don't have to be worried about that. And I believe the tenant that we have sees that and can see that, well, even if their customer goes to this beauty school for a trial, they'll soon see that paying a couple of dollars more is probably worth it to have a better haircut and not having a student work on it. So is there any question, other questions that I may answer?
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, David.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have any cards for or against. Anybody wants to speak on this item here? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony and go ahead to question, Commissioner response here. Anyone like to say something? Commissioner Menifee?
Well, I'm, I'm, as an old educator, I'm always pleased to see us helping people learn a trade, so I, I compliment that, that aspect. I'm very concerned about the number of people in that center who, who wrote a letter and said, gee, we don't think this is appropriate for some stated reasons. And that's too bad to see that kind of thing. There may be a misunderstanding, but, so how, how do you, how do you weigh those two alternatives? One of the things that the staff has talked a little bit about is if we were to do something for you, is to then say, we're going to look at this in six months and see where we are. And that might give the staff of the school and you as the property manager, an opportunity, Mr. Lee, to, to talk with the people around and see how they feel at that time. So I have a, I have that question gnawing at me, but I certainly want to support anything that's, has the educational value that you could bring to our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody, Commissioner Blackburn?
I had a opportunity to go by the property three times, and as Mr. Lee said, there's vacancy. I figured it was close to 25%. You said it's 22. I saw plenty of parking spaces. Out of the 27 signatures, the people who did not support the beauty college, I don't see any of them here tonight. I would assume that in your talking to them, you might have explained to them situation and so forth, but I would, if I were in the shopping center, if I had a business, I would love to have it full. No matter what business I had, I would love to have the shopping center full, so one more new business coming into the center, I would assume that would be good for everybody. So, it's just a comment, but parking certainly was not a, an issue when I was by.
Thank you. Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I went by it three different times, once on Saturday and then twice during the week. With 22% vacancy, I just can't see why we wouldn't let a, a business go in there, especially when they're educating people. There was no, no issue with parking spots there. It was almost like an open football field there when I went there, even on Saturday. It's going to bring additional business in for the residences, for the restaurants that are there, when the people eat, I would think they would welcome that. And in addition, some of these students may not have a car, and they're right on Glendora where there's bus activity right there, where they could take buses to get there. So I think it's a win-win situation. Rather than have vacant stores around, they have a business come in there like this, that, especially if they're doing educational work. So I'm highly in favor of the project.
Good, thank you. Mr. Woods, any comment?
I've been by there several times, and I was kind of surprised to see such a high vacancy. And I think this would be a asset to, not only to the city of West Covina, but also to the, 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 the school. And I, I'm for it.
Good, thank you. Well, one thing I can't, I couldn't understand, when I first read the first part of it, it seemed like a, a very easy thing, and I saw that letter with all the signatures on it there. But what puzzled me at first was, they all give an address that, they all give their addresses, Glendora Avenue, and they're all different addresses. So, I mean, they can't all be in the beauty business. I mean, I don't, what, what their motive was. And none of them are here tonight, so I, I don't see any problem with it. I mean, there's, Rosemeat School, Beauty School's been in business for a long time, and I'm definitely for going in that project under. So anyway, I'm going to be for it, and we'll go ahead and call for the resolution, please.
Resolution number would be 12-5497.
All right, can we have a motion, please?
Take a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Holtz, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Menifee?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Aye.
Chairman Stewart?
Aye. This action is final. Let's appeal to the City Council in 10 days. Thank you very much. Nonhearing items, shows none here, still the same case? Nonhearing items, there's, shows none, none, still none?
Still none.
Okay. Continuation of oral communication? Anybody have any last minute comments here?
Yeah, I would like to just...
Wait a minute, that's oral communication. You're not, you're not yet.
Oh, I thought you said anybody want to make comments. I'm sorry.
I'll look it up there. Okay, Commissioner Reports and Comments. Commissioner Holtz?
I'll wait.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I admire the staff and the wonderful job that they continue to do to help this city be what it is. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Blackburn?
I'd just like to say I'm happy to be on the commission with the other commissioners, and I'm always impressed with the fact that staff does a great job being shorthanded. So I'd like to compliment them on their good job that they're doing also. As Gerald said, wish everybody a happy, Merry Christmas, and definitely a great New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Holtz, say something, no? Oh, you want me to say it first? Well, Commissioner Woods, want to say something?
Well, this has been an experience for me. I also appreciate the, allowing me to sit here, and I've learned a lot, and, and I'm happy I, someone called me and asked me if I would do it, and it's been a real pleasure, and I enjoy working with all the people, and I wish you a Merry, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have the same, pretty much the same thing to say. I'd like to say, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to my fellow commissioners and the staff, the residents of West Covina. It's been a fun year. They go by awful fast, but we have a great staff here at the, at the city, and it kind of makes us look good up here, so. Anyway, till we have our next meeting, it'll be New Year, so we're, go from there, and I'll go to Commissioner Holtz.
I knew if I waited long enough, everybody would say what I wanted to say. But I do want to thank staff for being very helpful to us, and, and I want to wish my fellow commissioners and staff a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and I look forward to working with all of you next year. And to her and to our guests all the time, welcome, and same to you guys.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and go on to the planning director's report.
Well, I did want to welcome Paul. We were able to meet and discuss some things the other day, but he got his chance to cut his teeth on some pretty exciting items tonight. They're not all this exciting, but we'll see how they go in the future. There's two items on the, the planning director's report tonight. We have the design review subcommittee minutes from November 13th, 2012, and then we have the monthly status report. We provided you for information on projects that are, have been approved by this commission. I also did want to take the opportunity to introduce Jonathan O'Conne, who's our planning intern. He is a USC student, but we try not to hold that against him. But he's, he came tonight to, to watch all your wisdom in action, so. I also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I, I want to also reflect back, you guys make our job easier, and it's great to have a good working relationship with, with the, the commission so that we can exchange ideas and share thoughts. I really appreciate that. I know that we sometimes fall short of the expectations, I'm hoping that we learn from those mistakes, but I do want to reflect back my appreciation to you guys as well.
Good. Thank you, Jeff. We have any city council action at all?
Well, the second, I did mention it, so the second reading for the housing element was on the, the last Tuesday night's meeting, and they adopted it.
All right, thank you. It looks like we're looking for an adjournment for our last meeting of 2012. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned at 8:28.